You got Pat Howlett to show up.
Huh?
You got Pat Howlett to show up, he's on his way now.
It's not, I didn't get my stuff from Burger, so I'm not speaking.
Oh, you're not?
No. I don't have any of my documents.
Okay.
So now I have to give him two hundred and forty-three, seven dollars and...
Okay.
Did I? Yeah, he drug his feet.
The what?
He said he drug his feet.
Yeah, sure.
Of course, I'm recording right now, so...
Sean, how are you, Jim, Sean?
You are all good?
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
It sounds like she's gonna try to have preliminary results by seven. And then, and then, and up to later on, which she says she wants to get as numbers as soon as possible. So we'll see how fast that turns out for us. Yeah, I mean, I think it will depend on how much they're able to count throughout the work. I mean, I still might drop off my ballot, like, some of us haven't even dropped it off yet.
I just do.
Yeah, I probably have to run home and figure it out, otherwise they'll get away from me and I'll forget to vote. So I don't want to do that.
Yeah, you're just gonna travel to Brad. You're saying, you know, I might, you know, I might now, like, you cannot complain in the next two years or three, four years if you don't vote.
Great. Okay, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, I want to welcome all of you to this fourth county commissioners' regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, November seventh, nine a.m. We're calling this meeting to order. Please rise for an invocation by Commissioner Tony Haas and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Arizaldez.
Dear Lord, thank you for another day. Lord, we humbly seek your guidance and blessings. Grant us the strength and grace the opportunities and challenges that lie ahead. May our hearts be filled with hope, our minds with wisdom, and our actions with purpose. May we be honored to you with all our duty to perform today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call is very careful, Commissioner Haas, there. You should be small bit. Here, please. I am here. Approval of the agenda, will there be changes to the agenda, Mr. Dornkamp? No changes, Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval of the agenda.
Second motion. We should be small bit? Yes. Commissioner Haas? Yes. We should be small bit.
Yes, uh, we're gonna go through these very next sections through our consideration of minutes. Reschedule breaking meeting on July eleven, two thousand and twenty-three. Commissioners, we receive those minutes. By the way, Mr. Dornkamp, thank you for, uh, the reading that we have over the weekend. It was quite ample, so thank you for, for doing that, so...
Administered assistant office service.
Thank you. It was a great package, so commissioners, if you have no questions on that, item two A, I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, if I may, uh, entertain that we collectively approve, I had no questions on any of the minutes that are scheduled during meetings. So if it's okay with the board, I would make the motion to approve item two A through H at this time.
Same to you, sir. Second motion. Commissioner Haas? Yes. We should be small bit? Yes. Please.
Yes, thank you. We're going to, uh, section three, uh, meeting of correspondence, Commissioner. New report saying that this time, let me go ahead and make an announcement. At ten a.m., we have a public hearing, so at that time, whatever we are on the agenda, we're gonna interrupt this meeting. To go into the public hearing, I follow, I mean, we have two. But we're gonna open up at ten with the first one, and thereafter immediately, we'll go into the second one. And if the agenda is not completely done, we'll come back and finish that thereafter. So, reading of correspondence, Commissioner Tony Haas, would you like to go first?
Sure. So on the twenty-sixth of October, uh, the Colorado Department of Ag and Colorado Counties Incorporated had their monthly check-in with Commissioner Ag Day Greenberg. Topics included possible funds for Noxious Weed program for counties. And also, uh, because of our, our friends that live up in the northeast corner and everybody that lives on the, on the state's border, there was a port of entry conversation about Noxious Weeds that are transferred interstate, transferred, and the conversation ensued. Commissioner Greenberg, the day the Colorado Department of Ag is looking to acquire two new hires, uh, both within the Brand Inspector Division. She also told us of a recent trip to the U.K. Uh, the purpose of the trip was with the U.K. delegation was to highlight trade with, uh, our ag products. There were two legislators that joined, Catlin and Cormick. Colorado Farm Bureau had representatives of the Colorado Agriculture Association and the National Farmers Union. Purpose of this was to identify areas of collaboration and sharing information on the topics which include agritech, market access report, technological aspects, climate solutions, agri-boat take, soil health practices, carbon sequestration, and best practices. Animal health and welfare. Um, I didn't know this, but, uh, they still have the Mount and Brussels facility. They haven't got that under control, so that was, uh, the information that I was giving me. Uh, there was, uh, they're contemplating foreign, uh, placement exchange, so they would like to do like, uh, foreign exchange students, you know, with, uh, with, uh, individuals and, and also include the office space on both sides. Um, they're, they're also, uh, identifying doggo added products and pushing classification of biodiesel. And currently, uh, biodiesel and beef cattle are classified in the same category. And, uh, in the U.K., they would like to see them classified separately. And, uh, they realize that their carriers have Brussels also. And, uh, the committee asked if there was any pending legislation that would impact egg. And, uh, the local pesticide bill will be coming back. And that was the only one that Jordan, at the time, uh, knew of, and that's my report, so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Commissioner, who's focus?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, on the twenty-sixth, we attended the, the C-DOT transportation planning region meeting here in, uh, Trinidad at the Council of Governments, uh, one meeting of facilities, and we had a lot of discussions, uh, regarding the transportation of this county. The Highway three fifty projects are, um, continuing. Uh, the street flies are, have been utilized greatly by our community and our farmers and ranchers out east of world. The ability to still transport goods and services of cattle and, and agri-boat products to and from the livestock yards in Alana. So that has been, uh, very helpful for them. They will be closing, I think they did that, and will continue, uh, working on the bridges from Terro County. Um, and some detours would be used over there, um, yeah, along that, that route to go to, um, Rocky Ford and back to Alana, so. Highway twelve bridge is almost done to fruition, completion. It was opened this Sat- Sunday, uh, it opened through there, so Highway twelve, uh, project is, looks like it's complete, and they will probably use it in the, the project up here soon. And, um, Commissioner Terry Hart, who was a part of the Transportation, uh, Commission with C-DOT, was on that meeting and called him, and we vehemently oppose the, um, the joining of the Plains Region, the Eastern Plains Region, against, once again. He has received over twenty-plus letters of opposition from that, including the resolution that the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles, Amberfoam County, and Tennessee. Trinidad is also going to be presenting that, I believe, to the city council for opposition as well. The Transportation Planning Commission meets, uh, this month, and the decision will probably be reached by next March of what they're gonna be doing according to generous parts with, uh, C-DOT, Region Two Director, so. Um, the dollars we're gonna be allocating will be the same, but we'll be having to fight for the Southeast Plains Region, and that's what we don't want to do, is having a competition on our, on our infrastructure for our roads and byways. Here, uh, was explained again how serious the fact of the, the relationship of Amberfoam County and Los Angeles County on the Highway twelve connection of the tourism loop, uh, and also Highway twenty-five, which is the main, uh, dollar spent up and down of our, uh, highways and byways in these counties, will need to be allocated and used for that purpose. So, um, we move forward with hopefully, uh, support from Commissioner Hart to present that. And yeah, now he is the vice chair of the Transportation Planning Commission, so he carries a lot of top, and hopefully that will be left alone at this point in time. On the twenty-seventh, I was in Quavo at the, um, Quavo Depot, and the chemical depot, Front Range Passenger Rail, and there again. Um, I'm glad that we're having a lot of meetings in this South, Southern region of the Front Range Rail. We are moving forward with a lot of workshops and stuff in this central part of the state due to the fact of, uh, uh, we are not yet part of the, um, funding mechanism, but we do have support from the rail from Quavo to Trinidad with BNSF, awaiting the Front Range, I'm sorry, the Federal Rail Administration approval of that, and some other issues. We, we have major discussions regarding the ballot measure, uh, that Governor Polis wants us to present as soon as possible to the taxpayers, but we also happen to find other funding mechanisms. So it was a vision workshop, a vision workshop for the board of how to find other funding mechanisms, including possible legislation in this upcoming session. We know as a board that tax sales tax is not gonna fund that rail up and down to I twenty-five, from one border to Trinidad. So we have to figure out how, that possibility and effectively for the entire business of City of Colorado, and not putting a burden on just the district members up and down the Front Range. So that is where that is lying at this point in time. And did some housekeeping and so forth with that. We do have another meeting now in our workshop on the thirtieth, that will be in Denver all week for the CCI conferences. So we need Wednesday back to Trinidad and back thirty-two in the morning to Denver for that, that conference. So it's gonna be a long week of that, uh, the twenty-seventh after Thanksgiving. On the first, we're the Board of Health met, and we did a, a nice, um, little bit of gratitude for our, our D.C.'s president, who passed away recently, Ms. Erin Donahue, and, uh, a little, uh, thoughts and words of her and the years that she served on that board. Uh, Commissioner Vianzoldez was on that, uh, meeting for her for a while, um, and thank you for being there and attendance on that. Uh, I know Commissioner Haas was, uh, planting a seed that night, so I understood, and we thank you for all the years of being on that board as a liaison in Los Angeles County. The budget has been finalized for the Board of Health. Uh, to thank you, Kristen Cooley, that went up, a very good thank you to you for your assistance with, uh, Kim Gonzalez on the budget, working with them on our allocation. I did ask them, and we have the opposition H.H. pass, if that was discussed with, with, uh, Kim Gonzalez and yourself, and she said, well, it's just basically was not gonna be much movement in the past, so it fails anyway, the budget said. Uh, so thank you for that work, and that will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners, the Joint Board, next Tuesday, I believe, in Amberfoam County. We have a joint meeting with them and the district attorney, uh, for approval and adoption of the Board of Health and the budget. And we can forward that. Um, one update on, on the C word, the COVID, we all love that one. Uh, it is having somewhat of a spike at this point in time, um, but it is not as, um, as prevalent as it was for the dangers of, and thus those happen in conditions as well. So, uh, protect yourselves if you are sick. There is no guidelines or mandatory mandates at this time anymore, but the CDC recommends a five-day quarantine, and also, uh, possibly wearing a mask for three to four days after that quarantine, uh, because you can still possibly spread, uh, COVID at that time. And then, um, on the second, I met with the C-DOT Freight Morning Group. We have that group with presentations to C-DOT recommendations on our freight, uh, throughout City of Colorado, and we are just in a, uh, position right now, we'll be moving forward with the recommendations to C-DOT. And that is my question.
Thank you, sir. Uh, mine is gonna be brief. First of all, I want to welcome, uh, representatives from, uh, the Conference County, uh, Commission. Welcome, Mr. Pio, and also the city of Raton, so I know you have signed up for public comment, so we look forward to hearing from you. One of the, uh, one of the meetings that I attended with Colorado Counties Incorporated was with the, uh, with the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission, which is now the Energy and Carbon Management Commission. They're going through the rulemaking and the process for all of the oil and gas companies throughout the state of Colorado. Uh, the new regulations that are be, uh, that are gonna be put in place. Los Angeles County right now is under investigation for all, all of the methane seepage that we have throughout the county. There is a legislative bill that is going through the process to assess, and at the end of it, see how we proceed with all the seepage points that we have throughout the county on the, uh, on the bed, methane cold bed that we have here. So, uh, stay tuned for more regulation coming out on that. I mean, the governor will continue to work toward the, uh, renewable energy, but one of the things that we keep reminding the office of the governor is that we cannot walk away until we are ready. And the request from all of us, from a good majority of, uh, counties is, let's consider all types of energy. Let's give all types of energy the same, uh, opportunities so they can play equally in place, uh, for, uh, for counties. Also, Mr. Dornkamp and I had an opportunity to travel to Avon to present a dollar grant, and that was, uh, quite a drive. Beautiful, but pretty empty. I, we hope that in it we propose four projects, uh, and so it was worth the trip. But one of the things that we're finding out, the energy impact dollars have been collected by the state, uh, should, my opinion, it should always be considered to give back to those counties that produce it. Not so anymore. We had counties like Denver applying, and we had applications from non-producing counties in the amount of six million dollars on that particular, and that was only through the time that, uh, Mr. Dornkamp and I were present. So, in any event, uh, there is gonna be a lot of changes coming, uh, to us, but, uh, we also know that counties that are producing these tax dollars are impacted by those, uh, producers. Therefore, county roads deserve a little more, uh, uh, care. And so, the, uh, the other, I wanna, uh, give a shout-out to the advocates against domestic assault. They had a gathering last week, and it was a great attendance. They had a speaker from, uh, from, uh, I think he's from Georgia. Very good speaker, highlighted some of the points and comments. If you see something when it comes to violence, say something. It was a very, very good presentation, so, uh, a shout-out to that entity. And today, I also want to give a huge shout-out to, uh, all the veterans of the United States of America, the veterans of Los Angeles County, and the veterans, of course, of the state of Colorado. And one of the initiatives that the National Association of Counties, NACO, and as you Colorado representative, one of the things that we voted a few years ago was to actually light your buildings green this particular week. So if you have a light bulb, and if you don't, stop by and procure one, and put it on your house, put it on your base of business, and that tells the veterans that we appreciate the sacrifices that they have made for this great nation. And so, as this Saturday, we're gonna be celebrating Veterans Day, uh, they should be celebrated on a daily basis. So from that perspective, uh, a great, great, uh, thank you to all the families, to all the members, and to all the ones that serve, and especially to those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. So, on that note, sir...
Last, do you want to recognize, Mr. Dornkamp and the NACO recognition, head of our capros?
Yes.
And the publication again?
Yes, uh, so, the, uh, Los Angeles County was featured on the National Association of Counties magazine. We've, uh, Charlie Black, who is one of the, uh, journalists with NACO, came a few months ago and visited with the county, and he interviewed, uh, commissioners, and did a walk-through through the, a lot of the county roads in the county. And, uh, so, National Association of Counties actually has an article, it was the last, not this one, but, uh, the Penaltan publication, you probably saw it, and, uh, in which Los Angeles County is now diversifying the economy and the economic development by, uh, accessing the, uh, the well-maintained, maintained county roads. So there goes another huge shout-out to our county road and bridge employees for keeping those roads and for the entire, to the entire team of Los Angeles County to make it to the national level. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner, because I had, uh, as the NACO representative for Colorado, I had so many emails. Uh, Maryland, California, uh, Montana, wanting to come and do again a tour of Los Angeles County. And so bring your bike, and bring your whip wine, uh, uh, and, and, uh, visit Los Angeles County, spend a little money with us. So, uh, for the chamber, uh, if you haven't seen that article, please, I'll, I will share that with you. It's an incredible recognition to the county, and as you know, we have had many events that attract several hundreds, if not close to a thousand people coming to Los Angeles County. And just kind of an underground communication, we have met with the organizers of these events, so they respect not only the, uh, private properties, but also the roads, and understand that there is traffic at the time, at any time on county roads, and thus far, that relationship has been really great. So thank you for bringing that up, sir. So that's gonna be my update. Uh, let me go now to elected officials update. Do we have anyone on the line? Any, uh, elected officials, anyone from the assessor's office?
She just got on.
True. Okay.
So we'll come back to, to her. Do we have anyone from the clerk and recorder's office? Anyone from the treasurer's office?
Good morning, uh, I have to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, good morning, and have a great day. Uh, anyone from the sheriff's office?
Good morning, Commissioner. No updates, I, I just continue to monitor the jail standards committee, and, uh, they just haven't had any updates, but that's the continuation of what we've been watching, but they're not able to get any, let me know.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we have anyone from the recorder's office? Now let me go back, uh, county assessor, Mrs. Savaro, uh, do you have any updates for the board?
Good morning, gentlemen. Nothing at this time, um, we're monitoring some legislation, and I will keep you updated as we see how today turns out. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. On that note, we're gonna go now to a public comment. We have, uh, Mr. Seiter here, chairman of, uh, the commission of Colfax, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, fellow commissioners. I wanted to come up today and just introduce myself as the chair of Colfax County Commission. Uh, and extend a hand, you know, that we're, wanted to, to know who I was and, you know, look forward to working with you in the future. If we could ever work together on, on certain items or anything like that, please let me know. Uh, don't hesitate to reach out. Also, I do want to say congratulations on the National Association of Counties article. I, I was reading that paper from page. That's, that's an accomplishment, and I gotta thank you because some of the stuff I'm working on in Colfax County, that was perfect. I, I went to my commissioners and I said, look at this, look at what, what they're doing up here with Los Angeles County, and, and, you know, I took it to my lodgers' tax boards, there's something that we're working on there too, and, I mean, that's just, whoa, we can work together among other things, you know, re-advent roads for, you know, natural disasters and stuff like that. So I always just want to keep a good, a good line of communication open. And I, uh, the city of Raton here this morning is gonna kind of talk to you a little bit about, uh, some stuff that they have in mind. Uh, we're gonna be bringing it to our, our commission at this next meeting, and it's just kind of a, a letter of interest from, from the Colfax County. We haven't voted on it, on it yet, and I believe that it would be supportive, so. But they're just gonna touch briefly on it during the public comments, so. Uh, thank you, commissioners, I appreciate you taking, uh, taking my time to...
Chairman, if I, if I may, normally we won't engage in public comment, however, I would appreciate if we could possibly set up a work session, uh, since you bring up the fire mitigation processes with our emergency manager, emergency manager, Colfax County, maybe those two can come together and have some discussions regarding possible, uh, any type of mitigation or fire prevention or something like that in the future, and that could be one of our chairmans or one of the board members available as well to that.
Of course, and, and we're, we see it in our county as far as the fire mitigation stuff, or been applied to federal grants, uh, state funding too, through our forestry department to go in and actually thin in a lot of our areas. And I'm sure Los Angeles County is the same from an insurance standpoint. It gets to the point where the property's become uninsurable almost, uh, and we're trying to help our constituents with that.
Protection of our water says is really important. A couple, two years ago, the three of us were up on a fire, about four years ago, I was at Dornkamp as well, and here the flashes and come right with the protective water. So it'd be, it'd be great to have us all come together and, and, uh, reconvene some dialogue.
Definitely, I'll, I'll make sure that gets set up, I'll, I'll talk to our county manager and have him reach out as well. So, well, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, welcome. Let me, uh, now call you, Mr. Mestus, Mr. Rick Mestus, like, he's the city manager for the city of Raton.
Morning, gentlemen. Um, yes, I'm the city manager from Raton. I'm also a Trinidad native, and up until two months ago, we had carpentry up in Edor, and I do want to compliment you. The roads up there were always impeccable getting down to our farm. I just turned that over to my niece, so, um, she owns that carpentry now, but, uh, I've always appreciated how, how well roads were kept out to our farm there east of Edor. Um, to talk a little bit about, uh, the city of Raton, um, Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Raton, and Colfax County are all tied together. Uh, there are a number of things that are happening within our community. Um, I'm sure many of you know that, um, Congress has moved forward with Interstate twenty-seven that's gonna be coming into Raton, and most of that traffic is gonna be coming north into Colorado. Um, if you're coming out of Amarillo, if you need to go west, you're gonna be using Interstate forty. And there's probably gonna be a small amount of traffic going west into, uh, Semeron and Towson, Angel Fire in that area. But, uh, really, the bulk of the traffic is coming this way. So one of the things that, you know, I do want to talk about is that I want to reach out to all of the governments in this area and talk about collaborating on transportation, especially because that's really where we're gonna tie in. And, you know, we're looking at everything from, um, you know, trying to see if we can bring the rail runner north to Raton and into Colorado, so, you know... and into Colorado, so, you know, we can start getting rail traffic. Also, we'd like to start talking about commuter airlines. Their way, we could tie into either Colorado Springs or Albuquerque, commuter airline, and of course, the transportation, recreation. The city of Raton owns a large chocalane in Las Anmas County, you know, Las Anmas County is part of our watershed up there for the city of Raton. So, you know, we want to work closely with the commission, not only on transportation projects, but on health and safety, and on other issues that will kind of improve the cities closer together. I do want to work on, you know, reducing the rate of poverty in Raton and Colfax County, and I think a lot of the things that we can do, some of these plans and programs, especially as they deal with getting people back and forth, are things that, you know, we can collaborate on. So please reach out to me. I'm happy to meet with you individually or collectively, and it's good to be back in the region. Thank you so much.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mestus, thank you for bringing up the transportation piece of the rail runner. We were just discussing that at my primary passenger report, San Diego, Albuquerque.
Yes.
Run, and we're in discussion with them as well. What I'll do is I'll forward you our general manager's email and phone number, and please reach out to him and see. Basically, we can have more support from stakeholders in your, some of the state in Mexico. I think that will assist more connectivity, other than just the Amtrak. We haven't decided on even a provider, whether it be Amtrak or any other type of a train company that's going to be the operator as of yet. But I think it'd be a great idea to have that discussion.
One of the things that I noticed is that, you know, the state of Colorado, their rail plant seems to go to Cheyenne and kind of stops that problem. I would really like to see that come for themselves, because I think the utility of a front range railway would really help the economy of all the cities.
In the legislation, it's from border to border. The money that was allocated for the first study is just for constant problem. The board of Front Range Rail just last week did a signed resolution to seek out additional funding for problem to Trinidad.
Okay.
And BNSF is in the loop with that for, I guess, to possibly share. So the connectivity is there, it's just a matter of getting the steps fulfilled. But our main objective is to show Chicago to Trinidad, through Denver, up north, all the way to the valley.
Absolutely.
So we'll add in the information.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we look forward to having a work session with all of you. And I think it's not only fair, but important that, and these are topics, we know what's happening in Mexico and Colorado. Sam, please come up.
You are the governor.
And my apologies.
Hi.
That is fair skivvy.
Yeah, so I'm just here to sort of expand on a specific project that we might be able to collaborate on. So along with the Biden frustration act, there's Thriving Communities program. Have you heard of this grant? It's a US DOT grant. It is a non, it's a non-monetary grant, but it is a three-year grant for the regional community or a specific community to come up with transportation projects. So we have identified, of course, we have our I-27 project, which is a major transportation project that's going to impact this region for, you know, decades to come. And then, of course, the, what you were just speaking about, the rail runner project, and thinking about how we can really connect. So this grant is specifically to look at a transportation area for you to basically do project planning and scoping on these kinds of projects, to thoughtfully think through how you can connect rural communities, create infrastructure in order to have access to jobs, education, healthcare. And we believe that, you know, Raton and Trinidad are, I mean, we're just separated by a border and a mountain pass, but our economies are really tied together, our communities, families tied together. So we wanted to bring this to your attention and see if you would be interested in being, providing a letter of support for this grant with us. So Raton would be, the city of Raton would be the lead on this grant, and then Colfax County is going to be hopefully approving a letter of support. And we're asking if you would be interested in also being on this project with a letter of support. And if we are chosen as one of the finalists, I think there's about sixty-some finalists that they're going to choose from across the country, if you would then, at that point, write a letter of commitment for the three years to be an active participant in regional planning and basically whatever we design in terms of the project scoping. So I was thinking it would be great to think about what does it look like for I-27 to come through, how that's going to impact both of our communities, how we can take best advantage of it, so we're not just the pass through, but we're actually actively engaging in the kinds of commerce that, that sort of new interstate will bring, and then connect, figuring out how we can connect our communities via rail or back and forth over the past to connect to our communities. So, so that's my request, and...
On the letter of support, how soon do you plan?
So that's the thing. It is due on the fifteenth, this grant is due on the fifteenth of this month. It is next Wednesday. So I think, did you have some idea about how we might be able to do it? If you can't, I don't know if your rules state you can actually vote on that, even though it's not on the agenda.
We do have a special meeting next Thursday for help the judiciary and possibly set up. If the teachers, if we can, and legal counsel has the time to review it.
This would be due three, it's basically three o'clock on the time, next Wednesday.
Yeah, this will be out on Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, okay, Thursday.
So I think if you send us, you have contact information, kind of exactly what your request is.
Okay.
And my recommendation is you send it to our county commissioner, and then we can get that drafted and leave them over.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick point. It's non-monetary from my understanding, and I'd ask you, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what it is, is it's an individual within the federal DMT that's actually going to be assigned to our area to help us assist in any kind of stuff. So that's why it's non-monetary. It's just the federal government's going to be assisting with an individual to other.
Yeah, it's a technical assistance grant, essentially. So they're also, at the same time as they're doing this grant, they're doing another grant for capacity builders, so they're going to connect people around the country with people who are helping, who have the sort of, you know, infrastructure to help people, and then, and then there's applications for people who need the help, and so they're going to match those people together.
A great, great piece of that connectivity that I haven't heard you mention is we share our vision with our vets, and they do get services over there in Albuquerque, and vice versa, they'll come over here to our GSO. And it'd be nice if we had some kind of transportation that would help them, especially in the wintertime, come over the path.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I mean, that's really what this is, why it's called Thriving Communities, because it wants people, especially in rural areas, to help figure out, like, how you can make your communities better. And, you know, we're both three hours away from, or two and a half hours away from our respective metropolitan areas, and so we need to rely on each other, and having that connectivity together is going to be vital.
And Chad Howlett, the Las Anmas County Chamber of Commerce President is here with us, and I'm sure they've contacted him. And also, reach out to Steve Root, the city manager, for possible letters of support as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bob Howlett.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Lopez, Mr. House. I do come to you in the chamber, and here's the thing. It's the Trinidad and Las Anmas County Chamber of Commerce, and we're taking big steps to actually look at that. I was appointed to the Colorado blueprint core team, and one of the first things that they added, ag tourism, that that was also included in that thing, and we also added Raton in our scope there, and that was added to that. So we're using the Colorado consulting kind of things. We are a county by the chamber, so, you know, we're going to actually start working closer with you, and closer with our ag businesses, and closer with our farmers, our ranchers, our producers, our makers. Couple of months ago, I came on board, and we've been in crisis for a long time, just being totally transparent. Great organization, one hundred and forty-two-year-old organization. I like to say that anybody that was anybody in Trinidad, that you see the buildings, they were a member of this Chamber of Commerce. It's proud, we're stewards of this, and there's a legacy for us and a responsibility, I think, for us to do the right thing. We have positive momentum going forward. We've probably had more members join us in the last sixty days than we've had maybe join us collectively in any period of time over the last several years. So movement's turned. We're still looking for some members to renew. We know we have to earn that, like we have to do in our business, like you have to do to sit in those seats. We have to earn the trust back, and we're working towards that. We've invested in a new website, we've got new membership plans, we've got new benefits. The first order of business was to answer the question people have, that is, what do I get for my $200, or what's in it for me? So we've answered that. We think we have a very compelling reason for businesses to join the chamber and do a chambers to, and that's just organized business. We're not in the political business. We'll let other professionals do that. We do look forward to helping educate, and we did that in the HH proposition, and we think we did a, I think we worked really closely with the county and other stakeholders to make sure that people were educated with regards to what that meant to rural Colorado. We've got a luncheon coming up in November, it's the Wednesday. Thank you so much for your attendance in the last one, and in the past, all of you guys. We plan on bringing in the newly elected mayor and city officials, new council members should be there, and let them share their vision with the chamber. We, we, you know, we agree that collectively we do a lot more. And when the chamber looks at our region, we look, we look at partnerships in Werfino County, we look at partnerships in Colfax County, we look for close relationships with Raton, we look for Agulor meeting something in the chamber, we look to get out to Branson, we want to go out to Stonewall. We want to be a county Chamber of Commerce, we want to stay in our lane. So you're not going to see us do a lot of events. We're going to pull up other people's events that are professionals and doing events. And you're not going to see us doing much advocacy, certainly, but we do plan on being in the education area. But I just come here to say, we look forward to working and being a good ally and partner and worker along with the city, and along with the county, and along with our neighbors to the south, who we share more in common than we do some of our neighbors to the north, and we just want to execute on that. So thank you for allowing me to be here. You'll see me from time to time.
Mr. Howlett, where is the location of the luncheon that this next week?
TSC, the Pioneer Room. They do a great job out there for us, and we're so grateful.
Are you there with Marcy V, two days before?
No, I'll be posting something there. Would you, hey, you come, if you can't make it the day before, and you know you can't make it the day of, please come, okay? It's a big open door. Actually, we have no doors. We just removed them. So look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you for what you're doing.
We really want to thank you for including the committee, because certainly, Las Anmas County, because we have a producer a few years ago, we had a survey. It's an industry that produces close to $50 million gross revenue for the county, so thank you for...
Well, Commissioner Lopez, here's the thing. When people say we are a coal town, I just push back a little bit, because if you go back decades before that, we were a ranching and farming and transportation hub community. We were the go-in-the-town place. Now, they found coal later on, but our roots are more in ag than they are in coal, the roots of what we do. And we just want to go back to that and making sure that our, that our businesses that are across the county, know that they have a map in working with the county, and working with the city, and working with any other agents. That's why you have a Chamber of Commerce, it's why, it's why they exist. So we look forward to executing on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Public comment, we have Mr. Ray from the last, but I think, are you listed for the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, so let's go ahead, and at this point in time, we'll wait till we get there, because that's going to be relevant and pertinent to that particular section of the meeting. So let me call on anyone, anyone else at this time, a public hearing, a public comment online. Saying that, we're going to go now to presentations. We have about twenty minutes before we take a recess to go into a public hearing, so thank you to our guests from Raton and Colfax County. Welcome, and we plan on having a work session. There are so many things that we can do together. So at this time, presentation, let me call on the courthouse face to update Millicks with Aaron Tilden. Do we have, is the door down, are we online? Gentlemen, welcome. Good morning.
Hello.
If you can, if you can tie into the meeting on screen.
Okay.
Have we, you know, things, so if you see, there lies a little token, case of this.
You sent us the link, or you want us to even do the presentation.
You should have the link that I sent you for the agenda.
Follow, yes.
All right, while he gets that pulled up. Appreciate you guys having us here today. This is kind of the final project update meeting. We've been working kind of behind the scenes for, I believe, over a year now. I think September is when we began this engagement with the county. And I want to first off, thank you for all the assistance from Phil, Chrissy, Paula, all the facility staff, Jeff, Kenny, they've all been phenomenal to work with over the past year. And we are basically presenting the kind of final project updates, the scope, the cost, and hopefully get your approval to begin down on this kind of next phase of the project, which is the implementation, construction aspect of this, so. So we're in that link. Where's the meeting?
Right here, we go to C.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, so while he pulls that up, I'll kind of discuss kind of what you guys hired us to investigate in this building. This is really the third and kind of final major phase of construction and renovation of this facility. There's really kind of three main goals that we aim to address as part of this project. The first of which being failing HVAC system in this building, or should I just call it heating system? Steam system is about a hundred years old. Primary infrastructure is very antiquated. Boilers are actually not that old, they're very poor shape, just kind of a, not great equipment that's been very burdensome for the facilities management and staff. I came to try to reduce the amount of window air conditioners, and I can see some sitting over there, kind of a pain. They don't do a very good job of conditioning the space. So to that point, really kind of take a holistic approach to improving the air quality and the space conditions for the occupants, visitors, et cetera, of the facility. And then thirdly, and final, in adding a new mechanical ventilation system, front cooling system, there's obviously costs associated with the operation and the long-term aspects of that system. So trying to find a system that both has all the kind of benefits that you want in the facility, but from a financial standpoint is feasible and obtainable for the county moving forward, to not holligate, you know, a significant amount of additional dollars on a yearly basis to operate those systems. So I'm going to hand it over to Colton, and he's going to discuss kind of the more scope and details of the project.
And so, obviously, before we can install the new system, we need some demolition of the old system. We're completely removing the old steam heating system throughout the building. The boilers, the pumps down at the boiler room, as much of the existing steam piping and condensate return piping as are needed to install a new system. There's kind of a labyrinth of pipes down in the crawl space. Not all of that needs to be demolished, we could kind of waste the money to demolish it. Also, there's some asbestos down there, so any demolition you do is kind of expensive, so we're going to try to do a kind of surgical demolition of the piping as needed. The condensate return system, the cooling tank, those types of things, that'll all be demolished. The county kind of indicated that they'd like to realize the salvage value of radiator throughout the building. Some of those might actually remain, especially in the old, the big courthouse where they're kind of up front in the center of the room. kind of up front, center of the room, visible. I think the county might choose to save those. We don't, we don't need to do anything in those locations, so if you prefer to keep them for aesthetic purposes in some areas, that's fine. But in a lot of areas, they are right where we need to put the new equipment, because as you see here, they're in front of windows, and that's where it gets cold, that's a lot of the same places we need to put the new equipment. So we will be disconnecting, disconnecting them, dragging them, and then the county staff has agreed to come actually remove them, I guess probably resettle or get it salvaged from those. There's also a tree out on the east side of the building that maybe you'll move, we've got to put a big piece of cooling equipment out there. And although it could go alongside the tree, it's a big cotton tree that uses a lot of seeds, it's going to clog up whatever kind of mechanical equipment we put out there, so the county's also agreed to remove that tree. And then the asbestos abatement will be handled under a separate contract, helped directly by the county. So we'll help coordinate that, but we aren't actually performing that work, it's kind of better to keep that abatement stuff done just kind of by an independent party that really specializes in that work. And they're ultimately responsible directly to you, so. And then for the new system that will be going in, it's kind of a lot of engineering mumbo jumbo here, but it's a water source variable refrigerant flow system. That's a, bottom line is, it's a very efficient, kind of cutting edge, really leading the industry of new HVAC systems and equipment. And we're putting it here, very, very energy efficient, it allows you to move, move heat around from one side of the building to another. If you have some parts that are, you know, warming up in the sun, already getting too warm, you can take that heat and put it over on the other, you know, north side of the building or something else that's cool. And the same with cooling, kind of moving around the building very efficiently. We recommended, and the county agreed to go with a water source system, so that ultimately the, kind of the baseline heat and cooling of that system is going into a, into a water loop. And that, and that water loop is maintained, the temperature of that water loop is maintained by a couple of smaller, much smaller boilers than your steam system. Small boilers, as well as that cooling piece of equipment that I mentioned will be outside. It's much, it's more reliable than an air source system, could have saved some money if we went with just an air source system and cut out a few pieces of equipment, but this is going to be more reliable, and when it gets, you know, really, really frigid cold out here, you still have the reliability of a couple of boilers in the basement that are going to, you know, they're going to run, they're going to, they're going to heat up some water no matter how cold it is outside. We are adding some freeze protection in that system, just in case of those really cold times. We also have a brand new state-of-the-art field nomination system that allows your main staff to really, you know, through a computer interface, be able to go ahead and check on the status of all of it, change set points, check maintenance requirements, any alarms.
So basically, this system and not be proprietary software, are we able to have access to it for our own maintenance?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And we, of the different vendors who provide this type of systems, we hired our end, and we are going with ones that use kind of open source software, not like a proprietary one that keep it all locked up, so. So you'll be able to easily find contractors that can make changes to that system or work on it in the future as well. You're not tied into one particular vendor. Throughout the building, you can see some additional little equipment here, there will be a few of these kind of larger cabinet-looking things. We've, we've been deliberating kind of where we place those, putting them in the crawl space where appropriate. There are some places, you know, on higher floors that we had to put them, coordinated, kind of sacrificing a little bit of storage space here and there to fit some of this and run piping and things like that. And, and we're doing it very sensitive to the historic nature of the building, not, you know, not putting them in obvious areas where they're not showing the visibility. And then from those cabinet-style things out to every room, there will be some type of cabinet cassette or, you know, little console unit replacing where the steam radiators are, that provide the heating and cooling in that particular. And a lot of those are floor-mounted and will replace the steam radiators, and some of them will be from, you know, mounted in the ceiling. We're going to be putting in sub-jock steam, some suspended ceiling systems, only in office areas, kind of on the perimeter, that don't have the nice decorative harness, harness work and molding, so we're not hiding up any of the historic features. But those ceiling-mounted ones are much more effective at kind of moving air around the room and keeping those office spaces comfortable. And then besides the heating and cooling, you'll have a separate ventilation system for the building, for the first time. You won't rely only on opening and closing windows to get fresh air in the building. There will be a good reliable source of fresh air for the majority of the building. And then this is done through what are called energy recovery ventilators, essentially you're just bringing in fresh air, kind of heating it up or cooling it down just enough to be close to the room temperature, and then exhausting that air out kind of through, through the same piece of equipment, so you're picking up the energy before it leaves the building, so you're not just wasting as much energy. But the air streams don't actually cross, so you're not getting kind of stinky contaminated air coming back in. Some additional heaters are being installed in that ductwork, is bringing that, that ventilation air. So you'll have, in addition to those boilers to provide the heat, you'll have a little, a little, a little extra heating capacity just in that ventilation system for, you know, really cold days, maybe when the VR system is trying to turn on, people are coming in the building first thing in the morning, you'll have a little extra supplemental heat that's just coming from that.
Question on the filtration system. I'm putting my board of health hat on here. HEPA filters, what type of filters are used on that exchange of air, if any, for possible future outbreaks of any kind, if we don't shut down? Is there filtration on the system?
So the, so this equipment comes with kind of standard HVAC industry filtration, probably like a Merv nine filter. It's not, you know, it's not great filtration. That could be upgraded to like Merv thirteen, probably without modifying the equipment itself. If you go into HEPA filters, you'd have to like upsize the power of the fan quite a bit, use some locking fan energy, a little bit here, a filter, which is something that could be changed and added in the future, but it's not, it's not really needed, but I mean, if you have a health background, probably the best thing for diluting pollutants or dealing with indoor pollutants is just like more air, right? Increasing the airflow, bringing more fresh air in, and you could certainly do that with this.
Great, thank you. Yeah, those pieces of room are controlled on the same building automation control system, so it's very easy to go on and just basically manually operate that system instead of allowing it to maintain whatever minimums are set.
During the coal would outbreak, that was one of the CDPH's biggest issues for businesses, restaurants, municipal buildings, that business ventilation. I just want to make sure that we are somewhat compliant if we ever have another source of coal there, whatever the next new goal would be.
Right. And then, and the pandemic really revealed, I think, across public infrastructure, the lack of ventilation, too many old buildings still just relying on opening and closing windows.
Thank you.
There's a few spaces in the building that aren't a great fit for VR system, or it doesn't really make sense to install it. The large, the large courtroom, that's just too large a volume of space to efficiently handle with this type of system. So a dedicated packaged rooftop unit will be up on the roof of that courthouse, and will be dedicated just for that courtroom. Pretty high ceilings, so we're going with some special diffusers that actually change their position automatically depending on the air temperature that's flowing through them, so that when there's, when there's heat needed, they'll actually point down and kind of throw that heat down into the room more. When there's cooling needed, they adjust and let the air kind of come out around the ceiling and then settle in the room naturally. Also, throughout the corridors, most of the corridors, entryways, things like that, you'll have like electric, you know, cabinet heaters for those spaces. And then a few, there are a couple of server rooms will have their own kind of dedicated little, we call them mini-split systems, they're pretty, probably from where we built those, so. Console unit on the inside, and then a condenser unit sitting outside, and doing the device for them.
And as, as you consider that rooftop unit, I think, you know, since we just replaced the membrane of that roof, certainly that is one of those things that we want to make sure that there is no leaks protruding through, through the whole thing. That's one of those investments that we've made, and certainly we want to just handle that with all the care that.
Absolutely, yeah. And there are a couple other pieces of equipment on the roof, all of that we will handle. We will work directly with a qualified roof contractor that will maintain them for a team.
Very good, very good. I want to apologize for this, but we have, we have a public hearing attended, I really didn't want to do this, but I want to take a short recess, would you all mind coming back as soon as we're done? We have two public hearings here, beginning at ten o'clock, and then after that, we'll continue the conversation with you all. Commissioners, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to take a short recess.
It's okay.
Say it again.
Push the whistle, please.
Yes.
Push your hands.
Yes. Five minute recesses. We're going to start this exactly. We've got to start this exactly. Number seven, two thousand twenty-three. We are going to be entering into a public hearing. So, this public hearing portion of the meeting is open. The first section and item that we're going to be hearing is going to be application VR two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero five by Jennifer Redlin requesting a portion of County Road sixty-nine point four, approximately fifty feet wide and three hundred and forty-eight feet in length be vacated. The location is ninety-eight fifty Santa Fe Trail with legal description of section thirty-six, township thirty-three, range sixty-four, part of the west to northwest. The proposed vacating will not change any of the current zoning. So, at this time, we're going to be calling our director of senate from the county. But before we go into that, let me put a couple of items of information. Anyone that is wishing, we're going to hear the proponents first and then we're going to hear any testimony from the opponents. And if at any point in time this board requires the assistance of the assistance of legal counsel, we will then at that time request that. And I'm going to ask all the participants to remain respectful of each other, to remain, the topics and the subjects to remain to the conversation that we're having. This gives us an opportunity to look and see what has been done with our land use. And certainly from that perspective, we ask for everyone to be cooperative. And when you're asked a question, simply you're going to be under oath that your testimony will be exactly the truth as you know it. So, at this point in time, let me call on Mr. Lucero. Mr. Lucero, please come to the podium and raise your right hand to this warning.
Sound the environment penalty perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name and position.
Robert Lucero, planning and land use director. The application you have before you is for to vacate a portion of County Road sixty-nine point four. It kind of lays just, it'd be just to the south of the Tequila's restaurant. Based on the survey, it's fifty, fifty feet wide and three hundred and forty-eight feet in length. At that point, it dead ends, there dead ends right there because there's a ravine there. Back in probably two thousand, I think, the other side of that ravine, the extension of the sixty-nine point four was vacated at that time to accommodate for the motel that's back there now. So, this is just a small portion that, up to this point, we didn't, to certain point, we didn't know if it was on the system or not. But, and Mr. North Kemp did inform me that it is, it was on the system. So, this is the appropriate way to go about requesting the vacating procedures on that.
Mr. Dorian Kemp, as you're going to be part of the process, would you also be supporting at this time?
Sound the environment penalty perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And please state your name and position.
Phil North Kemp, San Luis County District.
Mr. Dorian, do you have, would you please display that portion of the road in question?
Commissioner, I, I don't want to speak by the spray.
The map of the section that has been. Yes.
Yes. If you'll, if you'll. Can you take a moment for me?
That's fine.
A moment. Through my research and investigations, I could not find where that piece of road had been, had been vacated. So, that's why I sent to Mr. Lucero the determination that we're here. And that road not been vacated, that piece of road not been vacated. Just want to take a minute.
That's fine. And my question is, so the road south of, that you made mention, Mr. Lucero, when was that vacated, the one that you made mention for the hotel that is south of the property?
The resolution was signed in the thirteenth day of March nineteen ninety. Thank you, sir.
Through the information that was submitted, there was a couple of questions that I want clarification on is, there is a question, is this road a hundred feet wide? Or is it fifty feet wide? Or what is the actual width of those three hundred and forty-three feet of road?
What I'm basing it on is the actual survey done by Mr. Gary Terry of the property and indicated that the road was fifty foot wide and it looked about three hundred and forty-eight feet long.